Yeah, I know something's wrong there. Actually, I think it looks like the clock actually stopped.
Did I mention how much I like this six o'clock meeting format? I do.
Welcome to the Town of Litchfield Selectmen, Board of Selectmen's Meeting. We're just getting out of paperwork review and manifest sing-achus. And first up, let's pledge allegiance to the flag.
My pledge allegiance to the flag. The United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
All right, first on the agenda is review of items for consent. Do they have any concerns with the items in consent?
Mr. Chairman, did you want to remove the minutes of January twenty eighth from items for consent?
I was just gonna abstain from the whole vote.
Okay. Make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that the Board of Selectmen approves all items listed under consent.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second.
Second.
Any discussion? And just so this is clear, the reason why I'm abstaining, I'm going to abstain is because I wasn't here for the minutes on the twenty eighth, but everything else in the packet is fine with me. All right, all, no, the discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Failed, okay, one, so four, zero, one. Thank you. All right, any other, any, any, any other business you want to put on the agenda for tonight?
There were three things that I wanted, but I think Jason's gonna address the issue on the AED, right?
I can touch on all three of those issues.
So, we'll just put them in his report and he can do it that way?
That's fine.
And then the minute, minutes updates, and then the AED, and then the insurance letter, right?
Yeah, I'll let you speak too.
Minutes?
Part of minutes, yep.
Okay. And I also want to add to the agenda, just an update to the Board regarding some Budget Committee Council interaction that's been going on regarding the last deliberative session. Talk about that real brief. Okay, anything, nothing else? All right, moving on, we have a guest tonight. Before Matt, it's Larry?
Leahy.
Leahy?
Leahy.
Matt Leahy from the Office of Senator, Senator Shaheen?
Yes.
Evening.
Thank you. My name is Matt Leahy. I work for Senator Shaheen, I'm based up in her Manchester office. And I actually don't have a particular agenda or issues I wanted to raise with the Board. I'm here basically just to introduce myself to all of you and to the town. You know, in case issues come up involving the federal government, either, you know, impacting the town as a whole, or maybe affecting one of your constituents, you know, maybe a Medicare case, or Social Security, IRS, and you need someone in, in the Senator's office as a point of contact, you can definitely use me as that point of contact. Again, questions, you know, obviously the, the issues involving the federal government seem to come up an awful lot. So, again, if there's any questions, if you think the Senator should know about an issue, or maybe it can be helpful, you know, please feel free to, to get in touch with me and I can, we have, you know, a lot of different staff who handle various particular issues, but you can kind of use me as that lead-in and I can help direct the issues to where they can best be addressed. And I did bring a copy of my business card, which I'll leave before I leave with you, so. That's, basically, that's all I'm here, just to introduce myself.
So, if citizens of Litchfield wish to communicate with the Senator's office, can you, we're on television, so I'm asking, if you can provide for the people listening, maybe, how they would do that?
Best way, and actually, I also brought with me a little flyer that lists all the Senators' offices and addresses and such. But, basically, the best ways, you know, a couple of ways, you know, call our office up in Manchester, six four seven seventy-five hundred is the phone number there. I mean, that's probably the, you know, probably the easiest and most direct way, although, you know, I understand people do like to email, which is why, again, I'll leave my, my cards with you. And this is, I'll also, this also has the Senator, Senator Shaheen's website address too, which kind of gives a lead-in on how you can follow up with anything particular as well. So, www.shahene.senate.gov is the website address.
Okay.
So, and I'll, I'll leave that.
Leave that and we could post it on our site?
Yep. So, basically, that's, that's why I'm here. Again, I'll leave my, my business cards, and you can, again, if anything comes up, please let me know.
Well, thank you for stopping by.
Yep, you're welcome.
Does anybody on the Board have any questions or anything? No? Okay.
Good.
Well, thank you again.
Yeah, thanks a lot, I appreciate your time.
Have a good evening, drive safe.
I will. Thank you very much.
Especially in Litchfield.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I'll thank you. Great. Good. Thanks for coming in. Appreciate you for stopping by, thank you. And next up is public input. Seeing no public, I'll close public input. Next on the agenda is Cable Committee, Capital Plan, and Revolving Fund Use, so basically a budget review and some of their projects they're gonna be working on this year. Good evening, Dick, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. So, just a little bit of context, I asked, when I met with Dick and his team, I asked them to come forward as if they were proposing their budget. As everybody knows, their budget's funded by the, the franchise fee, so it's really off-budget at this point. But, I think it's important for the Board, understanding what the direction of the committee is, how they want to use those funds, and, you know, have us be on board and, and kind of direct, if we can direct, in the sense of what we think some of the priorities need to be at their irony, that outside of what you're already working on. So, that's sort of the context here.
Yeah, I guess I just want to point out that, you know, that move to the revolving fund was approved at last year's town meeting and had an effective date of January one. So...
Now, the Board is agents to expand.
Right, and the Board are, the Board are agents to expand after January.
So, the ultimate responsibility for expenditures?
Right, you're off, so this, so this is why you see a budget, this is why you didn't see a budget through the fall, is because it lives separate from the budget that's on the ballot as a revolving fund. Remember too, that last year, when we lowered the franchise fee, part of the reason for lowering it was to target an income level that we expected to be around fifty thousand per year. The idea being about twenty-five for operations, about twenty-five for equipment. Now, bearing in mind that the other thing, because it's a revolving fund, is whatever balance is there at the end of the year carries forward to a future year. So, you know, the, the theory may, may well be that, okay, in a given year, you may not spend fifty, because you may save part of it toward a larger expense in a future year. So, that's sort of the budget mechanics behind this, and that's why you're seeing it now.
What are you saying no for?
I'm not, I'm just shaking my head.
Okay.
So, with that, that's the context, I think, for where, where this budget sits now in our new process.
Everybody has copies?
Yep.
Just, if you can reference which one you're gonna talk on first, that'd be good, because...
This spreadsheet, I think, would be...
Yeah, we'll go through the spreadsheet first. The items that are different this year are the telephone internet access. We underfunded that line item last year. We over-expended about eighteen hundred dollars. We haven't changed anything in the internet structure in the three facilities that we're maintaining, which is here, Campbell High School and the studio. We have static IP addresses that were required for our equipment.
Take a break and study for a second. The town hall one has been, there's a cancellation order in place.
Okay, yep.
The issue that I have is that a member of the committee signed a three-year contract with Comcast, so I'm, I'm, we're, I'm in the process of getting that, get rid of, get rid of it, so that will go away.
Good.
I would suggest we leave it there, but I would expect that you're not gonna fund, you're gonna spend that because...
Yeah, it's just there, because right now, that's what we're paying.
Correct.
The other item, oh, software services, that's, we pay three thousand dollars a year for the PEG Central, which is the internet streaming service that we use for our meetings.
Now, that's in the IT budget, though, it's not in the, it's not in the cable budget. Right, Jason? The central, I thought, was in the IT budget.
Let me look and see, because I, it ping-ponged around, I'm not sure where it ultimately landed, so let me do a quick check here.
I think it's still there, but I'm gonna go up, double-check.
That's what I'm, I'm pulling it up right now. Uh, nope, we took it out of the revised budget.
So, we don't need to...
Uh, no, so it is not in our budget, right? It is, it is not in the budget right now. So...
It's not in the town budget?
It's not in the town budget right now.
What's your thought?
Okay, so, right now, that's in there?
No. Right now, it's staying in your budget.
Right, 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 okay. So, you're gonna really, okay. Office supplies, that stays the same. Capital repairs and maintenance, or electricity and heat, I don't see us changing that. We've had the air conditioning system since last year, so I don't see us having to change that line item. Building repairs and maintenance, last year, we spent over six thousand dollars to put in the air conditioning system. This year, we're, we'd like to get the building painted, I've been working with Kevin to try to get that resolved, but, you know, they were trying to use some state workers, probably prisoners, I think, to help with that, but I think that has been withdrawn.
Right.
Is that currently withdrawn right now, so? We still need to get the building painted, so that's why that sixteen hundred dollars is in there.
Is that going to cover just the paint, or does that cover more than just paint?
Scraping and all?
Yeah, I'm hoping it's gonna cover all of that, scraping and painting. I mean, that's the idea, is to just get it, get it done.
Is that lead paint underneath?
I would hope not, I mean, the building isn't that old.
That was built later, yeah. That was, I, I don't think...
It's only probably five or six...
I remember when that was...
It's probably older than that, but it's, it's...
It's not as old as this building, is it?
Uh, probably, it was about the same time.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah?
It's about the turn of, about two thousand, yeah. Yep.
Uh, capital, uh, equipment repairs and maintenance, we're leaving that item the same. Same with minor tools and supplies. And the last item is equipment purchases. So, if you look at page four of the breakout, the Word document, it itemizes the items that we're looking at purchasing. We're looking at a flat panel monitor for here. So, rather than use a projector, you'd have a flat panel monitor. And the number two item is a wireless HD computer-to-TV kit for wireless streaming. So, what you'd have is a, basically, it's a USB device with a little antenna on it, and you can plug it into any laptop if you're giving a presentation, and then there's another device that plugs into the flat panel, so that you can wirelessly stream presentations. We're looking, number three, we're looking at getting Adobe Premiere to load on our editing system. The application that we have on there is no longer being supported by the company. Software is old, but the computer is still in great shape, so we just would like to get some software for that. We're also looking at the possibility of being able to do remote events. That's the kind of thing that we haven't been able to do, and we're starting to look at trying to fund that, so we can get some kind of interest in some other events. Some, some, some things we're thinking about are the Memorial Day proceedings. If we had a fly pack out there, we could stream that presentation live and record it, and then play it back on the channels. Other events, sometimes we get last-minute requests to do large meetings in the gyms of the various schools, other, other events that don't occur either in the auditorium at Campbell High School, or in the media room there.
Like, spring concerts and things, like at the elementary or the middle school?
Yeah, you know, anything like that. Again, you know, we're trying to get some equipment infrastructure in place and get some interest going. Sean Blanchett is doing a sophomore project at his high school for doing public access events and things like that, and, and we're trying to get him to develop some interest in the school, so some other kids might want to get involved and maybe do some programming, so we can get a public access program started here. So, he's looking at doing that as part of his sophomore project.
I was thinking of the Eagle Scout Award.
Yeah.
That was very impressive.
Yeah, there's lots of, lots of little things that happen in town that would be good to, to record those. Number five is more advanced titling capabilities to give us a little bit more flexibility with the types of messaging that we can put on, crawls and inserts and things like that, to just try to get our look a little bit more interesting, so that we get some, maybe get some better viewership. The recorders for the cameras, up to this point, have been tapes. And the new way of doing it is to have a, have a field pack that digitizes the signal right to MPEG four file, which can be easily dropped into a computer and edited. And you can record for much longer periods of time on this drive that bolts right to the camera in the, on the accessory shoe. So, we're looking at getting one of those for one of our remote cameras. The two cameras in question are the Canon GL two field cameras, and the batteries are pretty much dead on those, which is item number eight, seven, so we'd like to replace those batteries. And then, right now, at Campbell High School, number eight, we have a four-channel switcher, but we've got eight cameras that we A-B switch into those. And we'd like the ability to be able to get all of the cameras just put into one switcher to decrease complexity in how that system operates. And that would get us going for a while.
Okay. Any questions?
Is, Dick, have you looked at, I happened to see one working the other day, that's why I know about it. Instead of the, instead of the flat screen monitor, Hitachi makes a projector that has a very short throw, and they had it mounted right to the wall, projecting down. They didn't have to mount it on the ceiling, and then they had all of the cables run into it and all that stuff.
Mm-hmm.
And...
Yeah, we have, actually, a few of those at work.
Yeah, and they got them with wireless technology, so, in other words, you know, for example, if Jason's looking over budget stuff, he could connect into it wirelessly, I would think, and do it that way. Would that make better, would that, I'm just wondering whether that would make better sense than a, a flat screen? I don't know what the, the price difference, differences are, so...
I can look at that. I know that a lot of the public access facilities, town halls, they're using flat panels, that seems to be what most people are using.
Yeah. The challenge with projectors, the bulbs too, when the bulb fails, the bulb is very expensive.
Right, these bulbs, I, I think the number on them, they said, was something like, the bulb life is like three to five thousand hours or something, four thousand hours hybrid filter. Something like that.
Yeah, I certainly can look into that.
Three thousand hour lamp life. And they also have one in incognito mode, five thousand hours. So, I, I don't know. I just, I was just wondering whether it would work out, work out better. I know that the big complaint that we had was when we had the projector here, the microphones were picking it up.
Yeah, once on the table?
Yeah.
I mean, the thought was, when we were talking about it, when the idea came up about putting the monitor up, it would take the place of that whiteboard, slide down that way. It's actually something we can look at, and then the public can look at also. But, a projector would work there too, if it could be mounted up in the wall, like you suggested.
Well, and, and that's what they had done, and I was, I'm just looking at that wall, simply because it's a bigger area or whatever. And they have what they call shot throw
Right, yeah.
lenses, I guess, which allow you to focus.
Yep.
I don't know much about them, but I did, I did see, I did see one.
Okay. Any other questions?
One thousand four hundred and sixty-three dollars, if I find it on one website.
Yeah, so, price-wise, it's equivalent, probably, at this point.
Yeah.
Between the mounts, the cable...
Whatever makes sense, but I just...
Looking at it. Okay.
Does this have to be approved?
Yep.
So, moved, motion to...
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
How much were you approving?
So, we're approving the bottom line of thirty-eight thousand five hundred and forty-one dollars. That is coming directly from the revolving fund from the franchise fees.
And you plan on getting about fifty thousand for fees?
Yeah.
Approximately?
Yeah, that's about approximately what we get every year. Right now, anyway.
Yeah.
No, I mean, the, well, the franchise fee was a hundred and twenty thousand, wasn't it?
It, it used to be, yeah, but when it was lowered...
Oh, I know, but I just wanted to make sure people understood that.
Yeah, the new, the new lower rate is, was picked to yield around fifty thousand a year.
Right, we're collecting what we think we can, what we need to do the capital improvements, the maintenance, and the, and actual operations versus taking a whole lump sum in and doing whatever else with it.
Has the economy affected people with cable? No, not that much.
I mean, it's affected everything, I mean, people are cutting back on, on all kinds of things.
Yeah. But, it, it has been a slow, I mean, it is a continual growth each quarter when we get those checks in. Now, you know, sometimes the, the difference is only a couple thousand dollars over a previous quarter, but, you know, the numbers have gone up every quarter I've been here.
Of course, the amount went down, that we were, they were taken out, so, of course, that would make a difference too, right? Yeah. Good.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries.
Five, zero, zero.
Thank you, Dick.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your work. I think that there should be a, something that you should be able to take out of these fees. I know that you do have to put in a lot of volunteer time. I think it's great to volunteer, but there is enough with it, you know, we're...
That's, we have a line out in there, and we have people that, you know, that record the meetings, and they get paid for that.
They get paid, but how about you, the work that you do? No? That's volunteer.
I have a question, and that question is, I saw on your documents that you're gonna expand next year, expand the services or whatever next year, can you talk a little bit about what you're planning on?
Oh, the, we've been trying to get other committees to record their meetings. And thankfully, to the Board of Selectmen, you've put out a requirement that by, was it May of two thousand fourteen, that all committees, all public meetings are gonna be recorded, and that's one of the things we're looking at, staffing up for that, so. That's on the horizon.
Are there any additional committees you'll start next year, do you think, or...
Additional committees that'll be started, gee, I don't know.
Okay. We haven't even proposed that one yet. Hopefully. I didn't know if some people had called you and were looking to...
Nobody's asked us.
Okay.
If they do, we'll be there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, next up. Next up is the Administrator Report. New business. New business. Had received six proposals for legal services as of Friday, the due date. Provided all of those to you. The six firms that submitted were Mitchell Municipal Group, Tarbell and Brodich, Hage Hodes, Divine Millmet Branch, Donahue Tucker and Shindela, and Upton and Hatfield. They, there's a, they've offered a variety of rates, probably from a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour on the low end to two seventy-five an hour on the high end. So, you have a, across that group. And I can say that of, with the exception of Upton and Hatfield, as you go forward with this...
Thank you.
I've worked with many of the attorneys in these firms over the years, so, at a point that you may be looking for some perspective, I'm happy to offer that. Curious what your preference for narrowing this next steps would be. So, I, I, my thoughts around this, and if the Board agrees, we'll, we'll go this way, but I think everyone should take, should take a look at the packets that are available. By the end of next, by the end of next week, send back a sort of rating, one, two, three, four, five. Jason, I think you should do the same thing. Obviously, you've had some interaction with some of these folks also, so your opinion and feedback would be, would be warranted. I think we need to make, narrow it down to three, in that our next meeting, which will be the twenty...
Fifth, I think.
Twenty-fifth, we'll make a decision, or at least hopefully come to a decision. Now, that, that, now, Jay, our current council's okay, we'll continue supporting us, the way it's supporting us, so we'll have any issues there between now and then. So, I think, giving us a little bit of time to kind of go through the content we have, understanding who these, who these, these services are being provided by, and then making that, there's no sense jumping into it tonight, say, making a decision. Is there any objection to that?
No, I've worked with some of those, currently work with
Okay. So, I said, just...
Two of the firms.
Just send it off to Jason and I, just one, two, three, four, five, and your preferences as far as...
There are six.
Or six, whatever.
Okay, I'm just...
No, you're right, I only counted five when I looked at it briefly, quickly.
Well, it's DTC, H.O.'s...
Yeah, one through, one through
You're right.
X, so one through six, at your preference, everybody do it, get it to Jason and I, and then we'll, we'll, we'll take the top three, and then we'll use that as our, our discussion point for next meeting, to try to come to a decision.
Sounds good.
Okay. All right, next. Sorry, I gotta look back and forth here, okay. Mosquito Control District, we have received a resignation from John Pulis, resigning from the Mosquito Control District.
That's too bad, didn't he just, didn't he just get reappointed?
No, he is, yeah, his term was through fifteen, I think.
Have we received anything from the Chair with regards to the resignation? Has he acknowledged it?
Um, he acknowledged it to, I saw an email that went back to John on it. Um, I don't think it was directed back to the Board.
Okay. I mean, it's unfortunate, I mean, Mr. Pulis has done a lot of work for the town in the past couple of years, many years, actually, and I think his service at the community should be much appreciated, at least from my, I know, I know that we all appreciate the work he's done, and I'm sure the Mosquito Control District also shares that. So, I guess I'll make a motion that we accept Mr. Pulis's resignation with regret.
Second.
Second, and third, fourth.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I think it would be nice if we sent, um, thank you, thank you for all of the hard work that he has done.
I've already requested that, Jason, it's already put a letter up, we'll have it, I think, is it ready for signature tonight?
It's not for tonight, but I'll have it available.
So, if the Boards, if the Board's okay with it, I'll sign it once it's ready to go, and we'll get it to him. But, I totally agree, I think, you know, as I've always said before, I think the folks that volunteer in this community are the backbone. We couldn't do it alone, and, you know, it's, like I said, it's with regret he's resigning, but also kind of stand, when time becomes a problem, I get it. All right, any other discussion? Any other comments? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries five, zero, zero. And as I said, when, once the letter is ready, I'll sign it, we'll get it to John. And again, once, you know, if you watch, I appreciate all your effort and your help over the years, and sad to see you leave the position at this point.
I will point out that he is continuing on as a trustee of trust funds, so...
We appreciate that. I actually thought about whether or not, if we all voted against, if he'd be stuck helping himself.
Well, he just wouldn't do it, right? Oh, well, he probably would. All right, um, next up is the voter information flyer, just as a quick heads, I, you know, after deliberative of the school and the town stuff, like Jason and I started working on, and actually more Jason than anybody else, trying to formulate all the content we have, I think it's gonna be really important this year to have a spot-on, information-rich flyer. So, Jason, I know you have the...
Yeah, I, I have two things, so, I mean, the, the first is the technical piece, so before we get into the substance of it, uh, you know, we're reaching the point where we need to compile and distribute, you know, what we've done is we actually reprint the ballot as a sample ballot, and then put sort of a narrative explaining the articles next to it, so, you know, that... and then put sort of a narrative explaining the articles next to it, so, uh, you know, that, yeah, as much detail as you can give in two sentences next to it. We've usually done this via the HLN, and I wanted to throw out as food for thought. Uh, last, last fall, the Planning Board used the, uh, Postal Service has a new Every Mailbox service that they use for distribution of their survey that hits every, every household in town. Price-wise, we found that it was basically, they were all in the same price by the time we printed and posted, posted it versus doing an insert. Any preference, continue in the same way with a, with the HLN insert, try the Postal Service Every Mailbox piece?
I'm, Mr. Chairman?
Mm-hmm.
I'm, I'm just thinking out loud, that would, would the taxpayer going to their mailbox, be apt to identify that as a helpful item for voting if it's folded and, you know, could it be mistaken for a piece of junk mail? Whereas in the HLN, they open it, it, it's there, it falls out, and there it is. I don't know, I don't know what format-
Are you saying the voters don't identify the HLN as junk mail?
Uh, didn't, I am not going there, Mr. Byrd, what I'm trying to, I just would like to make it as identifiable to the voter as possible. Uh, as a service to them.
I, I will, I, one other piece of context I should probably put into this that I've, unfortunately occurred to me just now as we're saying it, is that when you fold it up as a piece of mail, you need to commit one panel to the generic address and the post-
Right.
You know, the box up in the corner, when you do a full HLN flyer, you don't lose any panel space because it's all an insert.
That may just answer the question.
That may have answered our question.
See, you know, you open it, there it is.
The, the other thing is, um, the lead time for getting those printed up at HLN, unless you select a vendor to do the printing of them outside of HLN, is usually, um, a couple weeks. So if we're coming up on a March eighth, I think it is, election?
Twelve, twelve, twelve.
Twelve. Then we need to have it in the next week or so.
See, I, I dropped, there's a certain other municipality that does that, and I dropped, that municipality's off at Staples today. They do eighteen hundred for us, uh, front and back staple, and then we give it to the newspaper. They stuff it in for us for a fee.
Right, and, and, and that's what we discovered last year, actually, that, um, the printer we use for like Town Report Printing and some of those things was able to print them cheaper and faster for us.
Yeah.
So, um, that said, we-
So what is the deadline going to be, though, because I think, you know, I, my assumption was by the twenty-fifth we'd have to be done and gone and ready to go.
Yeah, I was going to say by the end of next week.
Yeah, I, yeah.
I don't think you could go beyond the middle of next week.
Yeah, I, I'm, in my mind, I'm trying to get this wrapped up next week.
Okay.
Um, so I can get it out of here, and I'm not cutting it tight on deadlines. Um, so if we're going to go forward with the HLN, then the second piece is the content to accompany all of this. Um, and so I've shared what I tried to cobble together, in some ways, this was grabbed from the presentations we made at the deliberative session. Um, and again, you know, as much insight as I can provide in two to three sentences. So I'm looking for some feedback on this because, you know, this is just kind of what I cranked out on all of that. You know, especially those of you who may have spoken to an article, if you have any ways that you want to edit, amend, I'd love that feedback.
You spoke to the articles.
You only gave me the boring articles.
Yeah.
All right, great, this trust fund, this revolving fund.
Well, I mean, I think I'd like, I'd like to add references to the website information, too, so. In the case of, in the case of the presentation, one of the things that I'm trying to accomplish is to actually have the presentation and the video side by side with a reference link, so that they actually can go there and actually see the presentation as it was being delivered. We can, if we can potentially include that there, too, although, like I said, that, probably, I'm probably biting off more than I can.
Well, um, on the flyer, we have the sample ballot.
Yeah.
We have a little box at the top that says, you know, remember, vote, Campbell High School, times, date, all of that. My thought there had been, if we wanted to direct people for further information to the website, we'll dr- we'll dump it in that info box.
Okay.
And then we paste all the rest of these through, and again, I, I mean, I would do the same thing. We did not put in anything, um, and this is the other question, is, you know, are, I, my list omits the planning articles altogether. Because those weren't the selectmen's articles. Uh, and how do you want me to handle that?
To me, it depends on the page layout. If you've got to add extra pages just to do that, then I can potentially agree with you on it, but if it's going to fit within, a lot of times you end up with three pages, which is crazy, so then you need, can use the-
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think, I think you need to, it's going to be an eight, what size paper is it going to be?
It's, um, eleven by seventeen.
So I bet you if you can do, um-
Nine, nine font.
Well, but, but do four columns across.
I, the, the, I will tell you that, um-
Usually-
I mean, I, I know you worked with me on this last year, Frank, and we had a heck of a time trying to shoehorn everything in, because-
Usually, you, you end up with the worded, the warrant article on one column.
Mm-hmm.
And then the rest of the page contains the explanation across from the side of, on the side of it. At least, that's my recollection of it.
One, two, three. I don't remember what last year's looked like.
Yeah, I mean, we, we need the, we need three full, we have three, or, okay, better, two, two and a third, two and two-thirds, because I'm looking at the sample ballot, two and two-thirds paid ballot pages covering the eighteen articles.
And the other thing which was driving somebody crazy last year, I won't go into the details on that, was the pagination, because, remember that?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I, I, when I look at all the articles, I think it's going to be real important to understand, or to tell people what the tax impact is. And, for example, the operating budget one doesn't have the tax impact in it.
Oh, no, look at that, no, it doesn't.
No.
Didn't, didn't-
All the others do, but.
Didn't we take, actually, now that I think of it, didn't we take eleven by seventeen and fold it in half?
That's what I thought we did.
Yeah, that's what we did, yep.
And then we had-
Two columns per half, right?
No, we, we had, the, we folded it in half, so the seventeen was folded in half.
Yeah.
And then we had page one, you opened it up, that had to be page two, page three, and then page four. So page four and page one were on the same side.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, I mean, so you're looking for some help with the, with the wordings, I mean, what I've seen so far in the, the draft, it's pretty straight, straightforward. Is everyone ta- is anyone ta- is everybody ta- has everybody taken a look, or if no one's taken a look yet, can we? No, I didn't. Okay. If anybody has any feedback, can we get feedback by tomorrow afternoon? So that Jason can, can finish trying to put this together?
I'm also.
That would be great. And then I will lay it out and then try to-
Oh, you're not plugged in yet?
Plugged in.
Let's take a, just get a reboot. Don't try it off.
I know.
Because if you do, it may not come back.
Yeah, it's stolen stuff.
Um, I, what I'll do, right, uh, as well, just for your own, uh, reference, if you haven't kept your souvenir copy of last year's insert, um, I'll, uh- Yeah, I just, I just shared it with all of you.
Okay.
So if you want to take a look at last year's, just to remember how it moves out. And the space challenge, the space challenge, we had last year with a ballot that was shorter.
Space the final frontier.
Yeah, last year's-
Well, because you're putting a copy of the ballot on there, too, right?
Yeah, we're putting the sample ballot on there, too.
That's going to be all the warrants and everything in this one, so that's going to be like two pages right there.
Yep, yeah, last year, that took up-
Can we shrink it, though? Do we have to, can we, can we take it and try to fit it all in one page, but by shrinking it? So first page, the two-page ballot is shifted like this. It's still representative, it's a copy of it, but it's just not full size.
Sure, I, we can, um-
You know what I mean, I don't, I don't know how.
We can try, I mean, the, the, the challenge on all of this is, and that's why I'm trying to get, if I can get the copy to bed and people are okay with that, I got to fight the layout next, so I don't want to keep, you know.
Well, I think, like I said, I think the format is fine, the content you have in there is fine, I like to s- make sure that we do include, you know, make sure that every warrant that was appropriation-based does have the tax impact. I think you, you know, you make, you, you, in each one of you are describing why, why we're, we're at, what the major impacts are, that's fine. I think Article Four, it may need a little bit more, but we can talk through that a little bit more.
Mm-hmm.
You should be including in there-
Articles.
One. The election of officers, right?
Um, we just, and, and like, using last year as a reference.
It was just part of the sample ballot.
Last year, using last year as a reference, we began our narrative at Article Four, because with the sample ballot being shown, we covered, we showed Article One, which is the, the election of officers. We did not do any description last year for, uh, the planning articles two and three for definition of multifamily and accessory dwelling. Our narrative started at Article Four. So using last year, that's why I kind of, I started down that same path again this year.
Okay. Yeah, it's right here.
Well, that, that is right there.
I have some suggestions.
Right, it's right here.
Um, one help, Jason, with the layout, if, we don't need to do that in the middle of the meeting?
Okay.
Yeah.
Having spent some time earlier in my career in a publishing company, there are some tools one can use to really fit whatever size we want. The trick is me, making sure that even Brent can read it.
All right, appreciate it.
Yeah, like I said, let, let's try to get it to put the bed before, you know, this week.
Okay, great.
I was just talking about the IC, thank you.
Thank you.
Um-
Your concern for me is magnanimous.
You're the one who said, when did I printed my document too small, is it?
So this would actually, this would be in the paper the Friday prior to the election, so.
That's what I'm targeting.
Okay.
Whatever you do, don't rely on Saturday delivery.
Well, we'll take your lens, it'll be Friday anyway, so.
So that's, that's what I'm targeting for.
All right, anything else on the voter information flyer? Work, all right, moving on to workers, workers' comp.
Workers', workers' comp renewal, this is, um, at this point, it's simply a heads up on this. Uh, Primex is offering a contribution assurance program, uh, which they've done in the past, where you can lock in a maximum rate increase for two years. So this would be for the fourteen and fifteen renewal, a maximum increase of eight percent for each year renewal.
You did that last time.
Yeah, you probably did that two or three years ago, that was the last cycle that they did this. Uh, we have no problems with workers' comp with Primex in terms of their service, they've been helpful when needed. Uh, you recall last year, we, um, received their Prime Three certification through the, uh, Work of Joint Loss Management Committee, so that has controlled the growth of rates as well. Um, and this is the one line of pooled insurance that Primex has been returning surplus to its members. Um, remember, we have a premium holiday this year of about thirteen thousand dollars. Uh, I attached the documents on this, um, in part because the last page of the loss mitigation agreement, mitigation agreement, um, made me kind of, you know, want to make sure that we, you know, I want, was comfortable recommending this. Uh, part of that la- part of that requirement is a requirement to send multiple people to a variety of their trainings. So sending pe- I think like four people to a Supervisors Academy, um, three people to their Human Resources Academy, uh, which becomes a large commitment of staff time. For instance, the Supervisors Academy's four days. So you multiply that out, um, you know, the HR Academy, I'm kind of struggling to figure out where I'm going to-
Get three employees.
Where I have three employees that it's relevant for, you know. Um, I have one it's very relevant for, who outside of their recommendations, I would be scheduling to send anyway, but-
What if we didn't send anybody, what happens?
Uh, then we're not el- then we lose our eligibility. So, I mean, part of the commitment is, and, and, you know, and I understand that, I mean, on their end, it's, you know, managing their risk exposure, and they believe that this is the way that you do that, you know, you make fewer bad HR decisions if you have HR people who understand what the rules of the game are. So I, you know, th- that said, um, it's also as good a time as any to look at the other pool, uh, which is, uh, run through, uh, LGC for comparison. So, um, you know, I'm, I am getting a price from them to add into the mix for us to consider.
So when's this, when, when is our existing plan expire?
Our existing plan expires in December, however, Primex, in order to lock in the contribution assurance program, would like an answer by beginning of March from us.
Okay, and we'll have an LGC comparison?
We'll have an LGC comparison next week.
Okay.
That's, I've been gathering up all the stuff that they need to quote it for us.
All right, so let's put it on to the twenty-fifth.
Yeah, it'll be on the next meeting, so, um.
Do all towns have the same amount of requirements, in other words, or is it based on size of the town?
I would figure it's probably based-
Seems like four seems like an awful lot for Litchfield.
I would figure it's based on the size of town, you know, I mean, and they actually, and Supervisors Academy, they actually, um, you know, said, well, we want one from police, one from Town Hall, one from Fire, and one from the Highway Department, so, um, I'm not sure that all of that is the best use of our time and resource, of our resources in some of our departments, so.
And those are four days for each one of them?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, boy.
Yeah, let's see, well, let's see if LGC has similar requirements.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Can't imagine that they wouldn't, but.
But then they lock it in for only two years, you said?
Yeah, we, we lock in a maximum price increase for two years.
Yeah, but then they're jumping again, probably four times more than that, at the time the end of the two years are up. Boy, they're ripoff, I think.
So when you come up with the cost estimates, throw, you're going to throw in the cost of the attendance?
I'll try to cobble in some, so you can at least try to have an apples-to-apples comparison.
Because there is no cost to go, it's, it's our, obviously, we're paying these employees to-
Yeah, tuition's free, it's just, it's the, it's the time commitment.
Lo- lost, uh-
Productivity.
Productivity.
Right.
Well, it's, it's lost productivity in the office, per se, but we're not necessarily incurring substantial out-of-pocket other costs, because we're paying these people, so there's incremental cost of lost work in the office, but we're not actually-
Well, it's not like you have to replace them, it's not like a public safety-
Right, correct.
I mean, so your cost is not replacement cost, it's-
Well, it may be in the police department or fire department.
I, I think actually-
That's what I'm saying, if you have shift people, you'd have to replace them.
It, you know, and I need to explore it a little bit more with them, we have, uh, we have at least one, if not two, people from the police department who've been through their course, so I may, uh, so I may be able to count that. Um, you know, and then figuring out in the other departments, yeah, it will be interesting.
Okay.
So, um, just to let you know, I'm working on that.
So get us a comparison, get us another example, and then we'll discuss it on the twenty-fifth, or whatever our next meeting, I think it's the twenty-fifth.
Twenty-eighth?
Isn't it twenty-fifth?
Twenty-fifth, yeah. Eleven and fourteen is twenty-five.
It is twenty-fifth?
Yep.
So I've been saying the right thing all night.
Uh, Code Red. Part of the budget, we approved, uh, the rollout of notification system called Code Red. Uh, the Fire Chief, Police Chief, Town Clerk and I completed our training on February sixth, so we are now able to use all of the messaging features. Now, you know, this is, you know, this is the system similar to what the school has built for, um, its, its students and their parents. So the layers of, it can call your phone, and if you've registered cell phones, emails, texts, it'll send all of those as you have registered for that. Um, and you can split up the call ba- database into whatever, you could send a mass message to all of town. If we have a road closed, we can pull that off of a map and just send people in that area, so it, you know. The, the system is pretty flexible, as far as I recommended it, as part of this budget. Um, our plan is to start the enrollment push in the coming week. So what this means is the, a general database check and information for people to enroll, other phone numbers, emails, sign up for all of those things. So what, what, what will happen is that we will initiate a call out to everybody that is in their core database, and they will get that call, be invited to go to our website, um, and, uh, update and further information. Um, if they want to add other phone numbers beyond that one, uh, they'll be advised that if they're getting that call and they have friends and neighbors that haven't gotten the call, to encourage that. to encourage them to go to that website and sign up. Uh, it, the message also says if you're not, not, not going on to the website, uh, because you don't have internet access or are uncomfortable with it, that you can call here. And so, and we've, you, you, you know, our staff will be set up to know how to input that. Uh, town clerk also offered that mid-month is generally a slower period in their office. So, um, she volunteered to have, uh, her staff field a number of those calls as people come in to get their information into the system. So, um, we aim to be rolling that out this week.
Um, I'm not really sure if you hadn't considered this. My recollection is we have a election coming up, uh, in March. Can we ask people, um, if they want to sign up while they're at the election? Cause it occurs to me that many of the people in town will actually be showing up right into California. Um, get checked off to vote.
Um, I, I would be hesitant to co-mingle it at the registration table. Elsewhere in the gauntlet coming in or in the hallway, having a presence to explain. And in fact, even having, having a computer setup there might make some sense. Um.
How would we staff it, though?
No, we'd have to figure out if we have the capacity to put somebody.
Cause I think the challenge is in the last two elections, we've, we've not been able to staff what we're required to staff, you know, that can do outside of the regular duties. Two of us are running, so we can't even be in the building. Um, so I guess, I would just consider, I mean, I think it's a good idea, I just not, maybe it's, maybe what, what I'm saying, we're handing out, we're handing out the town report. We should make sure in the town report, it actually has a, a page dedicated to, if you want information, here's how you sign up.
I'd kinda wanna put something on top of, there's gonna be more people who want that than want the town report.
Yeah, yeah, I, we, we can actually make a signup flyer that goes on top, cause remember, we're trying to give out fewer town reports and more other flyers, but.
We should include it in the town report anyway, so it's there, but we should put something outside, to your point, outside of it that says, you know, here's a flyer, if you want, you know, if you wanna know what's going on, the good, the bad, and the ugly in town, you know, here's a way to notify you.
Yeah, I, I was gonna try to put together some flyers, so we might have them, uh, this weekend at the, uh, Winter Fest. Uh, for recognition, so.
Yeah.
Cause some of us will be kicking around there at different times during the day, so.
How about using a good write-up for the Hudson Show News on it?
Yes, I will, um, ask the reporter to follow, who's here tonight covering it, to follow right up on that. No, but, but I, I will, I will put something together.
We could write something in.
I, and, you know, um, you know, it's, uh, um, I actually, I have some canned information that I'll bundle with that and try to get that.
Good.
You know, so, you know, I, I realize we're competing tonight, I think there's a Hudson deliberative session tonight, so, to be fair to, to them.
Well, there's nothing, there was nothing juicy on the agenda, so.
I know, um.
All right, next.
All right, um.
Delegation.
All right, let me just, um, do a quick note, speaking of the town report. Um, the online version and CDs should be available by the end of this week.
Huh? We haven't, I don't think you've received all the, uh, submittals yet.
Um, I have one submittal I'm waiting for.
Yeah? Has it already gone to print?
No, but it needs to go to print very soon, or it will be no report submitted for that report.
And if anyone wants to know what that is, that's the Board of Selectmen's report, and I have it in draft, but I've still received no input from anybody else on the board.
You want input?
Why would you, you're the chair, we trust you with that.
Do you want input?
I, yes, he wants input, he asked for some.
I asked for some, and I asked for some, and I got a couple, you know, this, this, and this, but no content around this, this, or this, and.
You asked for ideas, I thought, you didn't ask us to review the report.
Cause I, I haven't reviewed it, cause I haven't even finished writing it yet. I'm asking for things to put into it.
Oh, okay, I mean, I thought you said you had it finished written and you wanted feedback on the, the writing.
No, 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 I was.
Why don't you write a draft and give it to us, and then we can, you know, rather than, uh, coming up with duplicate ideas and a whole bunch of stuff?
Why make this difficult on us, John?
Yeah.
John, I will give you, if you would like to share it, an editable Google document.
Well, that's how I would do it, I was hoping, I was hoping.
After this meeting tonight, I will help you edit said document, because I had some content.
I would be happy to offer some.
As long as I put all my words in, you guys can go, yeah, looks good.
No, I will.
Well, no, I, I, I would be happy to grammatically review it for you.
Yeah, I'm not a writing actor.
Okay, all right.
I asked about writing my own.
When is my drop dead date? That's what I guess I gotta know.
January tenth.
Wednesday. All right, thank you.
January tenth, that would've been, um.
Right, that was a, a.
Um, all right, we had discussed, or, um, John and I had discussed, uh, some point back maybe in January, um, that as things start piling up in Concord, inviting our delegation to the next meeting. Uh, New Hampshire Legislative Delegation, um, wanted to confirm preceding that idea and then, and also confirm that if we're doing that, extending an invite to school board, budget committee, various other town committees, department heads, who may have an interest.
Of course, if you, we'd have to move the venue.
Well, we've had, we've had it here in the past, and they've sat at this table, and we filled the room up, but.
Yeah, our delegation, our, our legislative delegation is.
Is really small.
Is smaller than it used to be, so.
It used to be thirteen, now it's four.
Yeah.
Five, if our senator or.
Right, so, you know, four plus a senator is five, so.
We could sit all of us right there at that table, or right there in the front.
That's exactly what we did, we just filled the room up with.
I think it's great, I, I think the sooner the better for the invitation.
Well, the intent was, the original target was the end of this month. The question will be whether or not we can actually facilitate it the end of this month, but.
Well, how about right after town meeting, the, the meeting after town meeting?
Yeah, actually, that may, that may, that may make sense, all because the, the potentially be new, new committee members, budget committees, new school board, and, uh, selectmen members, so. We can cover that.
Like the March twenty-fifth meeting?
Yeah, March, yeah, March twenty-fifth.
It will give the delegation time to, you know, review a lot, a lot of the bills that are filed, it'll give.
Does that make sense? Twenty-fifth?
What do you guys want?
Let's target twenty-fifth, let's get, let's get a, an invitation out to all, to all town committees, boards, and then to the, the delegation.
I think we'd be rushing it to try to do it the next year.
Yeah, no, probably.
I, I would suggest that if you're gonna also do that, you invite Carol Zine, who is the, uh, county commissioner representing Litchfield.
Sure.
That would be a good person, because she can talk about the county budget, county issues and stuff. Although county budget won't be done then, but she can talk about county issues.
Okay.
No, they, certainly more info, the better.
Yes, let's get up there, let's start socializing it, let's see who will come, and then. We gotta move the venue, move the venue, but try to facilitate it here if you have the pass.
Okay, well, at least two of that initial group of five are already here, so.
And they'll be here for that night, too. Oh, would you come?
Well.
So, so the number, the number of, you know, people we need to see.
He's either gonna come, it's, it's only three left.
Well, I'll put you this way, I'll be here sitting either on this side or that side.
Yeah, exactly.
I'll be here the other way.
All right, so we'll talk about the twenty-fifth of March, we'll get the invites out as soon as we can.
Yep.
And, uh, we'll go from there.
Yeah, for elections.
So, legis, legislation item. Legislation items, um, wanted to bring to your attention, um, a couple of things out of, uh, this most recent legislative bulletin, uh, that, you know, while there's any number of things that could impact us, a couple that kinda caught my attention, I wanted to rise here. Um, first is SB one twenty-one, which is a proposal to amend the sharing of the rooms and meals tax. Currently, the allocation is based on statewide collection and then reallocated out based on population. Uh, this calls for an adjustment of that formula, so forty-four percent of the total, uh, will be based on the revenue collected within a municipality, and the remaining fifty-six percent will be based on population. Given the relatively few number of places we have that charge rooms and meals tax.
We will end up with nothing.
This would likely mean a further decrease in revenues from the state. Interestingly, as written right now, it has an effective date if passed of July first, which, two thousand thirteen, which would then re, result in less two thousand thirteen revenue to the town. Now, to put into context, uh, last year, uh, rooms and meals revenue for us was about three hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars.
Having that cut by forty percent would be big.
Yeah, I mean, the problem is, it wouldn't, it's not necessarily.
I was gonna say, it wouldn't be cut by forty percent.
It wouldn't be cut that dramatically, but we don't have great numbers at hand, because it's not reported as to what's collected in each town.
If you think of it, roughly fifty percent of three hundred and thousand is what, a hundred and fifty?
Mm-hmm.
Call it a hundred and seventy-five, because that's three hundred and forty, or.
Three, three seventy.
Three seventy, whatever. So, if you, if you think it of three hundred and seventy-five thousand, then you take, uh, that's your forty-four percent for rough figuring, then figure out that we've got vermono, no hotels.
Yeah.
And.
You have a little.
A part-time place.
Yeah, yeah, you, you, if Woodman's part of the air, Haley.
Right, so, so the bottom line is that you're gonna lose about, hmm, I would say somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred and fifty of that hundred and seventy.
Yeah.
Does anyone know what's the intent to?
The intent is to get them.
The municipalities with the most, uh.
I would be willing to bet dollars to donuts that this is an SB, the Senate bill.
It's a Senate bill.
Then I'll guarantee you that they're looking.
Toward the racetracks, or toward the casinos.
No, toward, toward the Manchester, probably.
Sure.
Who, who's this prime sponsor?
Um, it had a surprising number of sponsors, actually.
I'm sure.
Um, let's see, what, what, what was it?
One twenty-one.
One twenty-one, thank you. Uh, sponsors include Senator Stiles, Bradley, Woodburn, Carson, Regan, Fuller, Clark, uh, Representatives Khan, Shaw, Rice, Umberger, and Wazlaw.
Carson, I'm, well, I guess I'm surprised.
I'm surprised Fuller Clark is in with that bunch.
Portsmouth?
Portsmouth?
No, no, I understand.
I mean, it's clearly in Portsmouth's interest.
That's a bipartisan.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's pretty clearly in Portsmouth's interest.
But it's mostly, wow. It, yeah, it's mostly in the interest of those that have the most, um, facilities that return the tax.
People that have retail, restaurants, or, uh, restaurants, hotels.
I gotta believe there's gonna be a lot of communities that would be impacted by it, because, I mean, all the suburban communities which don't have any, anything in it.
The, the, the thing that concerns me is those that would gain from it tend to be larger, better organized, more vocal communities. I, you know, in my previous life, before serving Litchfield, I would've clearly argued in favor of this, because, you know, I made the opposite argument when I was in Littleton, busting our tail growing downtown, opening new restaurants, bringing in hotels, and we got no direct benefit from our local growth. So I understand why people were advocating for it on the other side. Um, that's, that's the balance that we have here, so, um, you know. I, I raise it because it is a potential issue here.
Right.
Is this the backroom?
No.
Is it tomorrow night? Tomorrow night, yeah.
Uh, no, it's actually in the, I think in the back room.
Uh, the Winter Fest planning.
Yeah, so it's in the back, probably. I just saw Keith come through, so he may be.
They're probably down.
So it's Winter Fest, it's not the actual meeting.
Yeah.
Cause the meeting's tomorrow night.
Is, do they risk of, uh, do they break out a fiscal impact?
No, um, the, the, because the total amounts, the bucket stays the same.
Oh, that's right, it's there, it's, yeah.
The bucket stays the same, it just is shuffled, so, you know, this will change the amount each municipality will receive. It will not change the aggregate amount of money distributed.
I think it should be based, uh, forty-four percent on the number of cows in the community.
On the amount of horses.
Yeah, you were right, you submit that amendment, I'll co-sponsor.
The two of you do that, I'll go up and testify.
There you go.
So anyway, I'm not sure how you wanna approach it, um, it has.
What committees appear in front of?
Senate Ways and Means.
Uh, it said, uh, Senate Ways and Means on Thurs-.
Tuesday the twelfth.
Tuesday, oh, tomorrow morning.
Nine fifteen.
Tomorrow morning, yes.
Whoa, shot notice, huh, Frank? Hmm.
Well, Frank would've already known about it.
You'd be there, right? You'd better be.
George, right?
I can't.
I don't think so.
We only have two pizza places, and other ones.
I, I.
I mean, this, this will impact us, I mean, especially with doing, it becomes effective middle of the year, we have no way to even.
It's gonna pass the Senate.
Right.
Before it comes to the House.
The Senate isn't gonna care.
Right.
Right.
I mean, so they're gonna, and the only way you're gonna stop it is at the House.
Correct, yeah. So, I think, keep an eye on it at this point, I think the, you know, until we get, because the.
I don't think Woodman's open again.
Uh, I, I think you're right, that the place to raise the concerns more realistically is gonna be in the House.
Yeah, I'm planning on it.
I heard they were.
Because, anyway, so. Um.
HB one forty-two, who sponsored that?
Uh, HB one forty-two, this is a proposal to change the number of hours a retiree from, who participated in the Hampshire retirement system can work from thirty-two to twenty-four per week.
Holy crap.
Um, as, knowing, you know, understanding how we staff some of our key positions, um, this would have a.
Several communities.
A fairly devastating effect on the way we offer current, uh, detective, school resource officer services, fire chief, highway maintenance, all of whom, we've tap danced around to make the thirty-two work.
Mm-hmm.
Thirty-two isn't great, especially with the new restriction, and it's thirty-two per week, and it's across all eligible employers. We're making it work. Um, twenty-four makes it almost unworkable.
What is this, Jason?
Um, give me a sec.
Lambert, Bohm.
No.
Byron.
Well, it's kind of legislation Byron might co-sponsor, but.
Really?
No, I'm kidding.
No, no, sorry, that was.
These are gonna accuse me first.
Sorry, um, I typed the wrong number in, and that was a problem. Hold on a sec. Can't be one forty-two.
Thank you.
Now, all of a sudden that I'm looking something, you all fall silent.
Well, I, if you want, I can give you an update on minutes, while you look for that.
Hold on a sec, I just wanna.
Yeah, why don't we approve the minutes?
Put down that, no. No, this is the update on the, uh.
The minutes are already.
Three forty-two.
Three forty-two.
Will that have any effect on our employees, like at the incinerator?
This would impact almost all of them. This will, I, this will be, in fact, six employees, I can think of right back.
No, I mean, it wouldn't affect employees at the incinerator, because they're not retired.
No, but.
No.
One of them is, one is, okay, yeah.
Yeah, Jim is.
Yeah.
Yeah, Jim is.
But it won't affect him, because he only works like twelve hours a week.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're not pushing, we're not pushing the same limits, but I mean, I.
Fire chief.
You know, fire chief detective.
Fire chief doesn't work that many, does he?
Yep.
But he's only eligible, well, he's only working twenty-four, but the problem is he's working.
But, but you never, you never, remember, part of the package that was appealing when, to, to us, was that he could work for us. He worked, we're targeting around twenty-four.
Oh, yeah, for Bedford, too.
He also, he also works in Bedford, he also teaches at the academy.
Yeah.
All of those are eligible.
Oh, wow.
So he's probably working his full thirty-two.
I bet he's working more than that.
Um, oh, yeah, and he's probably working more than that.
So, uh, this is from Rep., uh, Representative Sullivan.
Manchester?
Dee Sullivan.
Oh, no.
Hillsborough, forty-two. So, um.
One, one sponsor?
One sponsor.
No co-sponsors?
No co-sponsors.
Oh.
You're gonna put your name on it, George?
Um.
What's, what's the bill number, John?
Uh, Bill's, Bill's three forty-two. Now, this has a hearing on Thursday.
Before the municipal county?
Nope, um, House, executive departments, and administration. Do we know anyone on that committee?
What?
Representative Dee Sullivan is a Democrat or Republican?
I don't know.
No, it matters if you're advocating, come on.
It's an L, it's a.
But, but anyway, I mean, real concern for us, I guess I'm gonna look to committee member, is it, are, you know, input from us, yes, no?
With regard to this one?
With regard to this one?
Yeah, I think if we gotta, if we have to send some, I mean, we shouldn't enable our representatives to bring voice to the concern, right? I mean, how, how can we not say something about it? We run our town with retirees.
Well, I can't say anything about it when it comes in front of the committee on Thursday.
Why?
Cause you're on the committee.
Well, for a couple of reasons. Number one, during, you, you're not allowed to debate the pros and cons of an issue during a committee hearing on a bill. You're only allowed to ask questions. That's number one. Number two, if I get out, get off the committee to go testify. Number two, if I get out, get off the committee to go testify, then-
Then you can't vote.
Rightly so, I probably can't go on the committee and vote on it.
Yeah, that makes-
Well, good, considering the sponsor also sits on the committee, then that removes one committee vote for it.
Yeah, but that worries me because I know that committee member.
Oh. So, what, what would be appropriate for this board to do then, send a letter up to the committee and say, you know, for the time, or?
The biggest impact is not gonna be a letter, the biggest impact will be, I mean, having somebody testify.
What time?
Uh, let me look at the, let me look at the calendar.
If it's Thursday, it's probably afternoon, George.
It's probably-
Because the governor's giving her, her-
State of the state?
State of the, uh, her budget at ten. Thursday's Valentine's Day, right?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
How can what?
I was gonna say, how can she give a state of her budget, or, she's only been in office how long now?
They stat the budget before she got into office.
Uh, it is, um, it is slated for one fifteen.
Where is it on the agenda, is it close to the first item, or is it?
Uh, no, it is, uh, yes, the, the first item they're going to hear that day is a bill establishing Franklin Pierce Day. I'm hoping that that does not take longer than the fifteen minutes they've allocated for it.
Well, we need to go through all of the accomplishments of Franklin Pierce, so.
What will you do with the remaining ten minutes?
That could take, that could take thirty, forty minutes.
Um, so, anyway, um-
His son was killed in a train accident, by the way, I just told you that.
Really, I didn't know that. You're really making that up?
No, look up his biography.
I can't, my computer is going really slowly because I'm trying to look up this bill.
Okay, so-
Like browser says, oh, snap.
So, you're on the committee, so you can't say anything, you'll listen, and George, you're thinking-
Thursday, what time?
One fifteen.
One fifteen.
Yeah, one fifteen.
Now, either, either that or have Jason come up and testify.
Well, I was gonna suggest the other side of it from a minute, you know, have, if you're available to go up and testify on behalf of the town.
I'll try not to make you laugh.
Oh, my god, it's bad enough sitting here, um, yeah, I can't, I have, I have something else scheduled that day that I'll push, I'll try to push off another month. Um, because I, I just was pulling up, I was hoping that the timing would work, but-
I mean, you can, you can-
I have to be on the other side of Concord at one o'clock.
You presented the committee, the, what the impact would be to a community of ours, that you know what the employees are, what we're using them for. There's a, there's a, there's a huge, there could be a huge impact if, if this was to go through, so.
Okay, I, yeah, I mean, I'm-
And I could fill you in some details on what I suspect is the background on this.
Okay.
All right, so we have a plan.
Okay, so then I will plan on doing that, then.
And, and George doesn't-
I will, go there, go on.
Um, alright, next up is the AED status?
Uh, AED status, um, I spoke to, actually, last week, I think I spoke to fire chief and paramedic Ray about this, they had done the homework. I think we're gonna initiate the order for two of them.
For the incinerator or the-
We had one for the incinerator, which we encumbered funds for, and one that we had received a donation for, for Town Hall, so we're gonna, um, so it just was teeing up the paperwork and get it done, um, maybe another week by the-
Do we need to accept that donation for Town?
We've already done that.
Yeah, we did that.
We already did that, so, um, and appropriated it for that purpose, so it's just hanging out there to do that, so, um, so, um-
So, by next meeting, we should have either ordered and purchased and waiting from the ship, or something like that?
Yeah, hopefully, yeah, um, you know, I, Jim's away at training this week, so it'll probably need to be picked up next week. The insurance pools piece, uh, I spoke with Jay Hodes about it, uh, and realized that, um, the conversations and paper exchange that David and I had was largely over the phone, so I'm, I told Jay that I'd put together the paperwork trail that I had put together before, so I'm gonna send that to him and we're gonna follow up. Remember, the, the concern here was that, you know, there's trailing amounts of funds that have not, that, um, in both of the pools that we've participated in that, um, were, have not been committed back to us yet. Um, you know, parts of, there is part of the LGC, uh, health insurance pool that is sort of in limbo right now because they've returned some, but there's a remainder that, uh, the secretary of state's hearing officer feels should be returned. Uh, Primex has returned mem-, uh, funds in one of their pools, um, workers' comp, for which we are getting funds, um, and they have not returned any funds in any of the other pools, remember, we used to participate for them with insurance, so.
But there was also the cutoff date, I believe the cutoff date was two thousand and five?
Wow.
Yeah, oh, for, for the, the settlement that Primex had showed through customers through two thousand and nine.
Was it nine?
Yeah, because-
And one of the things I wanted to do was see, should we go back further?
Yeah, because we were, we were, um, customers of Primex through ten, I believe, so.
I'm just saying, if they've been collecting excessive funds for a longer period of time, we should be going back for that, which is outside the scope of the settlement. That's my point.
Okay.
Do you understand what I mean?
I do, I see what you're saying, yeah. Um, so, gathering those pieces together.
So, you'll bring Jay up to speed?
I'm gonna bring Jay up to speed, I'll have an update for you next meeting.
All right, does that answer the question?
Well, next week, maybe.
Well, next meeting, yeah, once we get Jay back up to speed. All right, the next one's minutes, uh, so, um, over the last several months, the minutes online have been getting behind. Um, we have finished the transition over to the new system, and our minutes are now one hundred percent. Up to date for all committees and boards that submit electronic minutes. Um, the office, we have a procedure now in place that are getting a little easier to post, but I think we're, um, we're in good shape. I know I sent an email, I, I know Frank, because you've inquired several times, I've sent you an email directly, but, um, if you go to the town website, there's a meeting minutes tab, you click on that, and all the boards are listed, and then you'll, the rest of it's sorted by dates and so on, so it's all there. Um, I think the only, the only real open issue we have right now is still the non-publics that went, expired to go public. We have an inventory of all those, I'm sorting through those now, trying to get them reconverted and put those up also, just trying to figure out what's the best way to post those as far as how to intimate some of meetings, but, um, we'll be there. You looking for Winter Fest?
Yep.
It's down the hall, take care.
On the right.
Yeah. Um, so I think we're, we're looking pretty good. Um, the only thing I'd say about, the only additional thing I'd say about minutes, typically, minutes are being published if they are in draft format, if I get them in draft format, but if I don't get them in draft format, they don't go till they're actually been approved. I've encouraged all boards to submit them in draft, which is watermark as draft, and as the new ones get put out there, they just replace it and I put those up instead. Um, but, that's a, been a little harder to kinda get through, but once they've been approved, they've definitely been posted. Okay, any questions? Okay, here and done, next up, you all set, Jason?
I'm all set.
All right, next up, selectmen reports, I will just throw out mine right, real quick. Um, recreation commission meets tomorrow night, they're actually meeting tonight for the Winter Fest kinda planning. Winter Fest starts on Friday the fifteenth, goes into the sixteenth, several events, you'll see signs posted around the town. Um, if you're looking for more information about it, go to litchfieldrec.com, which is their recreations website, and they have a list of activities and events that are occurring during the next couple of days, over, over that period of time. That's, that's my update, anybody else?
I had the conservation meeting last Thursday, we didn't, we had just barely a quorum because they had thought that we're changing it, and they had temporarily changed it, but then they went back to the regular date, so. Nothing outstanding happened.
Anybody else? All right, hang on, moving on, items moved from consent, there were none. Next is other business, uh, the only open issue, the only other business we have is the one I raised, uh, just wanna make sure the boards are aware. Um, uh, budget committee council interaction happened over the last couple of days. We received an email from the school board chair, John York, um, inquiring about, um, deliberate meeting and the meeting that occurred after that, some questions around, um, the revotes that occurred. Uh, we forwarded that to council on behalf of John Hart, the chair of the budget committee, and all that's been, um, going to John Hart and they're working through that. I believe the budget committee is actually meeting tomorrow night to kinda clean up anything that's over on that. Um, I will make one request, I will take the, the initial emails that came across and the council, I will, like, they haven't added to that meeting minutes, just to, just to cover our aspect of it. The board of selectmen's involvement has been nothing more than just facilitating the council requests from the budget committee chair, and, um, the, but, the board of selectmen has no decision or, um, as far as what's going on there. And I'm sure tomorrow night, the budget committee and the school board will resolve that issue.
Very unusual.
The attendance was worse this year than previous years, right?
Deliberate, yeah.
For both of them?
Yeah, for both of them, we had, what, um-
Seventy-five at the school and about twenty-five for the town?
Yeah, yeah, and I think the school, if you add it up, it was probably more-
And if you look at the town, I counted people who weren't associated with town government, it was only about eleven.
Yeah, exactly, and I think you probably find the same percentage with, um, in the school.
The school, yeah.
So, does anybody have any questions about the budget committee council thing, we all good?
Oh, all you did is take a request and send it to our attorneys and give it back to one of our departments.
Yeah, and I also, and I also shared an opinion that happened last year for the same exact question. So, that was the initial over to John Hart, and then when we got our opinion, John Hart also received it from the office, I think he also started from the office. So, the office's involvement's only been facilitating, Jason has been, we're making sure the stuff gets asked and sent back in a very timely manner, and then my, obviously, my involvement was initial, uh, question and concern that was raised, so. Like I said, I'll, um, I'll tag the ones that I, I'll tag all the emails associated with the training, I'll just get it added to the minutes, just so that they're part of it. Okay? Any other questions?
Nope.
No? Okay. Um, all right, next up, we have, we're going to, we have a non-public scheduled, so, um-
I'll make a motion, we go into non-public session?
Actually, before you take that motion, can I inject one more thing in the public meeting? Sorry, I should've added this to my report. Yeah, I wanna recognize it was, uh, a long weekend, particularly for the highway department and their contractors, and we had a lot of continuous hours of dedicated service, and, you know, wanna express appreciation to them for having everything under control, um, you know, when, you know, selfishly on my end, I'm teed up to do public information. When there's a storm, I had nothing to publicly inform because everything was under control.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought-
That's a great feeling.
Yeah, I, I'm glad you brought it up, actually, uh, I spoke to Jack on, I spoke to Jack Pizzaro on Sunday, I text him on Saturday, because when I ventured out after the storm was over, I was amazed at how clear the roads were and how well, how, how great of a job he had done, his crew has done. Um, and I think we, you know, we need to recognize that. Traveling outside of this community, the roads were horrible, in this community, they were very good. And, uh, considering the, the speed of the storm, the amount of snow that fell, you know, hats off, that, that crew did an excellent job, and even tonight, they were out there already, tonight, they were up, they already prepped the roads, they were-
Well, they're moving snow now, the parking-
Yeah, I could hear, I heard the backup horns chime, so, yeah, so, obviously, thank you to the road, the road agent and his crew, and, um-
Well, to all employees, it may have been, did they, we staff up, fire, or police?
We did, yep, yep, we had, you know, we, we had extra, um, you know, we had, um, coverage available at the station throughout the weekend for the fire department, so, so, you know, two teams of two, so we could respond if we had an overload.
I think any, all the emergency management personnel, the road crew, I think, um, it goes without saying that we do appreciate all their efforts, um, especially in, um, extra, uh, ordinary circumstances like we saw over the weekend. Uh, certainly, it's, I appreciate it as a taxpayer, and I certainly appreciate it as a selectman, their efforts, uh, and a lot of times they go unnoticed. And, um, and I, I think you're right in thanking them.
Yep, totally agree, I want, as you said, thank the fire department, the police department, and the highway department for all the efforts. As uneventful as it was?
That's good.
It could've been an event, but it wasn't, it was a good thing, so, not even a flicker of lights.
That means that everybody's prepared.
Yeah, but you actually have me to thank for that because I bought a generator.
Yeah, I've had one too, and, you know, for many years, didn't, didn't need it, now I need it. All right, so, we're gonna go into, um, non-public session per RSA ninety-one A, colon, three, Romanule two, section E, for pending litigation.
So moved.
Okay. Second, okay, roll, okay, motion made and seconded, roll call vote, Mrs. Jewett?
Yes.
Mr. Byron?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Lamir?
Yes.
Mr. Brunel, yes, so we're all in favor, five zero.
Zero.
To go into non-public, we'll just be coming out of non-public to adjourn the public meeting, so we'll say goodnight, and our next meeting will be February twenty-fifth, six o'clock Town Hall, have a great night.
Drive carefully.